All right, good evening. Welcome to the City of Arcola, Texas. City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, beginning at six P. M. at Arcola City Hall, located at one three two 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 Highway six, Arcola, Texas, seven seven five eight three, for the purpose of considering the following items. The City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas, deserves the right to meet in closed session on any of the below items should the need arise, and if applicable pursuant to authorization by Title V, Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code. I now call the meeting to order at six oh three P. M., announcing that we do have a quarrel. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Rosemary Bigby, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Ebony Sancho.
Dear Lord, I thank you for letting us gather all together tonight, and I hope that everything goes according to plan, of God's plan. And that everything that we want to happen will happen, and some things that we don't want, it's God's will. Thank you. Amen.
At this time, we have roll call. Councilmember Evelyn Jones, here. Councilmember Greg Abar, here. Mayor Pro Tem Ebony Sancho, here. Councilmember Rosemary Bigby, here. And Councilmember Florence Jackson, here. We also have a city administrator, Dr. Annette Goldberg, and our city secretary, Nick Corinna. At this time, we will have public comments. Citizens who desire to address the City Council with comments of a general nature may do so at this time for a period limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for general public comment?
No.
Now we'll move to comments on consent and regular agenda items. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for general consent?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Burton is here. He's here to speak about agenda items ten, D, and E. Mr. Burton, you have three minutes.
Yes. See on your agenda this evening, you have a resolution on item C, where it's industrial park over here at Post Oak Point. You want, see you want to change the original plat? And that plat was put in place because it would generate city sales taxes. I see developments here tonight, so it'd be nice to know why you want to change that into industrial instead of leaving it commercial, which was the original agreement. Which if you don't leave a commercial, then you would lose city sales tax changing that particular plat. Should say like we are second and third. The second one is, uh, we, uh, I know when you put the agenda together, the, uh, city administrator is supposed to be able to look at the agenda and proofread a lot of things that's on their agenda. Well, on this agenda here, you have, uh, for the Dallas and Masterson Streets, I mean, for Dallas Masterson, right there at the lift station, that should be a enterprise fund, but due to whatever y'all allowing it, you putting it on the general fund. So I don't think that's something you can discuss or pass tonight because of where it's written in the agenda. Same thing as E. The lift station at Dallas and Masterson, you got that under the general item, general fund, when it should be under the, enterprise fund. Pay the city administrator a lot of money. For something like that to get overlooked and put on the general public to see it, I don't think that's right. Because they are paid to do things in a way, and we never had that. We never had that. Not only that, your turn is shit. It's not here tonight. That should have been something you should have called anyhow. If you're also in the general to the attorney, for the attorney to oversee the agenda and proofread and approve it to be placed for the public to look at it. This right here is a waste, taxpayer's money and time.
Madam Secretary, have any more public comments?
No.
At this time, City Councilmember. Ms. City Councilmember Ebony Sancho, here. What do you call him? Evelyn, Ms. Evelyn Sancho. I would just say, um, you know, there's one mayor at a time at the City of Arcola, and I know the things were done one way under the last administration, and thank you, thank you everybody for the comments, but the city is in good hands, and we got this. So just want to let y'all know. We can go now to the next.
Okay, agenda item three, public hearing. The public hearing for the proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Currently, right now, it has been tabled, and it will be, it is scheduled to take place September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, which is next Tuesday. Moving on to agenda item four, consent agenda. Consideration of and action on the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, Inez Bernoy, City Secretary.
As we discussed yesterday in the workshop, I'd like to entertain a motion. If no one has any questions, I'd like to entertain a motion. Item has been, uh, motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Ebony Sancho, second by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor, all opposed. Motion passed.
Moving down to agenda item six, presentation. August twenty twenty-four, um, permit monthly report. Unfortunately, Ms. Lenisha Garrett could not be here today, but you all should have a copy of her report.
Yeah, I had a chance to look over that, council?
Yes.
As discussed on yesterday, nobody has any additional questions? We can't entertain a motion, please?
Oh, you don't have to vote on that. It's just for information only.
Oh, I thought it said chapter last. I'm sorry. My fault.
Uh, agenda item six, B, the city engineer's report, Mr. Lawrence Turner of Calusa East.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You should have a handout with our report. I'll just quickly go through them, because you get to talk to me a lot tonight. Just an update on a couple of things. Pretty much, it's the same thing from last month. The only thing that I would add, I'm gonna go actually to the engineering design projects, the water plant expansion. We're still on track with regards to that. We'll have plans submitted on that one. Probably within the next thirty, forty-five days. The Arcola Water Plant Orthophosphate. Those plans have been submitted to TCEQ, and we're thinking in the next thirty days we should have that approved, so they'll hook up the orthophosphate over at the water plant. Uh, the water plant expansion, that permit is still at TCEQ. We're still waiting on TCEQ to issue that permit, and that's gonna go from nine fifty to four point one. That's the permit portion only. But it's, it's still going on. It's in their hands. It's been out of our hands. They have up to ninety days to review. That's just their timeline. Uh, and the, uh, let's see, what did you scroll on? And the current expansion, they're testing components right now for the current expansion. It gets us all the way up to nine fifty. You know, their goal is to, by October one, as you told me online, it's gonna be posted. But that's all the report I have for you. I'll entertain any questions that anybody have of me as it relates to my report. My report is just presentation only. No actions required. Yes, sir?
On the, um, MOC report?
Yes, sir.
When I noticed the, the rainfall events that we had last night caused a significant flood of water. And I think I've asked this at least two months ago. What action was the city taking to try to address the rainfall?
So one of the things that you actually have on your agenda tonight is rehab of one of the sanitary sewer lift stations that's at the intersection of Dallas and Masterson. Uh, we know that you can actually physically see some I N I coming around through the wet well. Uh, so that's one of the things that we're gonna start right there. We also, because we're under the SSO sanitary sewer overflow initiative, one of the things that will be coming to you, we're getting prices now, is to start doing some flow monitoring throughout the system. Uh, flow monitoring will be able to tell us during dry weather what the flows are, and then the wet weather what the flows are, and try to help us isolate which areas are more problematic than other areas, so we can kind of identify which ones need to be a top priority. Those will be the two things that are happening right now.
So one of the things that we've mentioned previously is television. Try to identify any infiltration that would be, we're not doing any of it.
So we have talked about it. We've not implemented a plan yet. Uh, I'll be able to, after I've, the first thing we want to do is work with the man home. That was the number one item. Uh, we will be looking at that, but I just, I don't have a current date for when that's gonna happen.
It seems like we're dragging up.
I mean, there's things that we are doing. Again, like you have an item on there tonight with regards to the lift station. Uh, I mean, we're gonna have the flow monitoring. Well, the flow monitoring is for the entire system. Oh, yeah, yeah.
One area of the full system.
That's correct.
So when do you anticipate the flow monitoring being completed?
So we have not gotten the proposal from the company that does the flow monitoring. Uh, and let me just do this. Let me just give you a schedule, so that way you got something. Council has something in writing that says, okay, here's what we're doing as it relates to I N I. Here's the money. Everything's gonna tie back to money. No matter how I wanna look at it, it ties back to money. And so that way, here's the estimated dollars, and then you get to choose. We'll recommend something, but then I'll need council to go find those dollars along with the other projects that you wanna do. And, you know, council, mayor, y'all tell me what you wanna do. I did give you a priority, but that money, those funds is what's gonna drive what happens.
Also, Greg, keep in mind that one of the things I've been going back and forth with leaders and councilmen, Roland, you know, we have to fix, you know, certain steps, right? We don't fix the lift station. We do television. You know that you still are gonna get the problem with the I N I, so that lift station is putting on. So we fix that lift station, and then we do that television stuff, but with that, there seems to be a certain order. Just like, you know, I wanted to tell, I was asking, hey, we've got these big kids over in Hinedale Manor, right? But you gotta, you know, they had to look at the drain, and Southern County has been up there looking at that main drain to get some, those steps that they take first in order to, you know, so we cannot really spend the money immediately.
But it'd be nice to have one.
Good. I'll give you a schedule, list, and we'll go from there. That's not a problem. I'll put a cost to it. Because if it's got a cost, then you can determine, well, you know, what do you want as a priority? Because, you know, and I've had this conversation with the mayor with all the items that are on the report and things that need to be addressed. It's like, we have more projects than we do money. And that's, that's any of this stuff. And so, you know, I can tell you here's what a priority is, but at the end of the day, you have to tell me, you know, you have to find the money. Uh, before the next meeting, I'll make sure you have. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Are you ready to move on? Okay, uh, agenda item seven, regular agenda item. Um, seven A, discussion consideration of and possible action on the August twenty twenty-four Municipal Operations and Consulting Report, Mr. Roland Liao, M O C Area Manager of Operations.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor.
Good evening.
I gave y'all a copy of the M O C Operator's Report. Um, I do want to say there was a mistake on the one that was on the rain inches. They put hundred and six point nine inches. We did not have it. We did have a lot of rain. It was during barrels, but I just want to say that's why I corrected it and I caught it, you know, before we got here, and so I was in a hurry getting it, so I wasn't able to get it to net. I can't get it to you, so you can have it this time. We're looking at billing period between July nineteenth and August nineteenth. We have nine hundred and ten total connections, fourteen of those being vacant. Your sewer connections was one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight. We pumped six million four hundred and billed six million two hundred and thirty-four thousand, which put us at a ninety-seven percent accountability. Your revenue total was a hundred and nine with seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. And your sewer plant was sampled in permanent running good at eighty percent permitted capacity. You go to page two. Looking at your sewer treatment farm. For the Arcola side, we, we took in six hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons from the F S one, freshwater system one, we took two hundred, excuse me. Let me rephrase that. For the gallons, it was eighteen million and five thousand gallons for Arcola, and seven million three hundred and four for the freshwater one, which put us at an eighty-six percent accountability. And the rain inches that you see below, it's at sixteen point ten, this was during barrels. When Barrel came in, that's what causes with a lot of flow, a lot of I N I, and a lot of raining just came in all at once. You turn your page. Looking at your D M R. The ones that you wanna look at, if you go down that list, will be your P H, which would be your second one. We were towards the middle, where it says value one. It was at a six point nine, so we were good there. If you continue going down to your E coli, third to the bottom, we're at a one point oh. We were good there as well. Those are your main things that we'd like to look at when we're gonna actually start, because E coli is something that could cause fish kills. So we were good there. I did also give Dr. Annette, um, a L C R. It has been sent, filed, and accepted by T C Q. We are way ahead of schedule on this. It's always good to be ahead. Do you remember the L C R revision was where we went and we had this any house before nineteen eighty, they had to dig up and find out if the, if they had lead lines, copper lines, or if it was going on P B C. Um, anything after that, we didn't have to worry. Well, they did find one resident with a copper line and, and as well as one service line. Imagine they're both the same. We will be getting this, um, the address in the future. I'm letting y'all know because in the future, we have till twenty twenty-seven to get notified of customer. Here it's one, other district, it's a lot. And then we have till twenty twenty-nine to replace that, um, service line, which will be the Arcola's responsibility. So we're way ahead on the game. I mean, at some point, it's not gonna be, obviously, a big cost, but at some point, at some point, we all get that prepared, and we can get it, get it out of the way. That's all I have for y'all. Unless y'all have any questions.
You say you will let us know the address?
Yeah, they'll be sending us that, right? I did, it was pretty, it was pretty recent, that, um, letter that we received that they accepted. Thank you.
Hey, um, as from the court, um, that, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, motion has been made by Councilmember Jones and seconded by Ebony Sancho. Mayor Pro Tem Ebony Sancho, all in favor, all opposed.
Seven D, discussion consideration of and possible actions to allow Municipal Court Department to participate in the twenty twenty-four National Night Out and allocate an amount not to exceed three hundred dollars for this event general fund. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
And we can't motion in this. Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, taken by Mayor Pro Tem Sancho, all in favor, all opposed.
Agenda item eight, plans, plat, and permit. Eight A, discussion consideration of and possible action to approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas, considering a final plat submitted by to be commonly identified east of Escandito Drive, south of South Tyne Street in the E T J of the City of Arcola, Texas, Mr. Lawrence Turner of Calusa East.
All right. Everyone's got it. L C eleven by seventeen. I believe I see them up there in your hands. Glendale Lake, section fifteen. We've come up here many times as it relates to this particular project. This is in a mud district. They get their water sanitary sewer, uh, from the Municipal Utility District. This is a nine point seven acre tract with forty-seven lots, three blocks. It's a continuation. Uh, everybody's been here enough now to know that this is just continuation of the master plan that was approved by the city many, 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 many years ago. Uh, we have given them comments. They're very, 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 very minor comments. Uh, staff would recommend that, uh, council take action to approve this subdivision plat subject to the comment list. I'll entertain any questions as it relates to this particular project right here. And the comments are, mine are like, change the signature block for the mayor. Uh, it's that kind of stuff.
I'm interested in whether we approve the plat for one year, section fifteen, with the, uh, comment correction.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Jones, all in favor, all opposed.
We're now down to agenda item eight, B, um, discussion consideration of and possible action to approve a resolution for the final plat of Charleston Heights, section two, amended plat number two, a subdivision of one point zero zero six acres of land located in the manual Escalera survey, abstract one seven zero, Fort Beane County, Texas, being an amended plat of Charleston Heights, section two, according to the plat thereof recorded under plat number two zero two two zero zero seven three of the plat records of Fort Beane County, Texas, Mr. Lawrence Turner of Calusa East.
Again, Charleston Heights, section two, this is an amending plat. Uh, this is a plat, when you're doing a amending plat, when you have strivers errors. And so in this particular case, uh, there's a small section when you're looking at the plat. If you notice, along James Michael Drive, uh, they had to, they labeled the waterline easement and the sanitary sewer easement. And so it's changing, modifying those easements, not the width. Again, it's just, it was mislabeled. And so we're doing this, uh, amending plat for that correction along with, uh, the mislabeling of reserve. Strivers errors, it's, it's in the E T J, so they have to come through us. We gotta prove it, and then they gotta still go back to Fort Ben County because it's in the E T J. That's it. They're not, they're not adding lots. They're not, I mean, they're not changing literally anything on this project here except for fixing typos. I guess that's a good style.
And your recommendation?
Oh, our recommendation is to approve the amending plat. I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion that we approve.
Just to make sure our customers, it's labeled as final plat, and it's in the, but it doesn't affect your thinking, just make sure.
I'm making a motion that we approve the trial, section three, amended plat number three.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Jones, all in favor, all opposed. Motion is passed.
Now we're down to eight, C, discussion consideration of and possible action to approve a resolution for the preliminary plat of Post Oak Point Industrial Site, a submission of three point two five six acres of land situated in the Thomas Burnett Survey, abstract seven, City of Arcola, Fort Beane County, Texas, Mr. Lawrence Turner, Calusa East.
All right. Last subdivision plat for the season for me. Uh, this is, I'm guessing, everybody's got this? Appreciate staff making sure y'all have it. Uh, this particular tract right here is located pretty much if you walk out of the door and look towards Missouri City area. Uh, it's south of Highway six, east of Boston, and north of Tuscany Creek. Uh, this one, so initially, they kind of came, uh, Post Oak Point came in. Initially, they had a overall conceptual plan that you all have seen. Uh, initially, all of this was commercial. Everything along with it was commercial. Uh, they've come back and on this particular tract, this particular restricted reserve A, they've come back in and said, uh, they wanna do it, I guess, as industrial. Uh, I don't know what they're gonna put there, because somebody would ask me, and I would tell you, I can't tell you. But I can tell you this is a preliminary plat. And so I did issue some comments as it relates to that. Uh, probably the biggest comment is, and it's only from the standpoint of, of Tuscany Street is access. And I'm just saying right now, uh, the way I have it on here is that access is relaxed, is restricted off of the residential streets over there because I don't know what's gonna go there. So we don't wanna have eighteen wheelers and everything else coming in on Tuscany Creek and, because I've seen those things happen before, uh, in my original home. They would come through, and these streets weren't big enough, and it just came, it was a lifesaver. And so, um, but staff does recommend, uh, And it just came, it was a lifesaver. And so, um, but staff does recommend, um, approval of the preliminary plaque subject to the comments that are attached in there. And that's probably the biggest one. They have some other minor things that they got to fit, but I mean, that's probably the major one right there. I'll entertain any questions that anybody have of me as it relates to this particular plaque right here.
Well, so what's your recommendation, Janet? We don't know what's going on. What, what, what's your recommendation?
So the attorney is giving me the evil eye right now and he's telling me that, uh, if they meet the rules and the fact that I don't know and I, you know, we have to put, and it's a preliminary plaque too. So it's got to come back before.
I think I'm surprised if you, I mean, Mayor Buck just said, we talked about this workshop yesterday. How do you define commercial versus industrial? It's an industrial reserve. How does that, how does that distinguish?
Well, really it won't get down until, uh, it won't really come to a head until your platform building permit. That's what it's going to really come to like because at that point in time, you gotta say, I'm putting a, a nuclear plant on that track right there. I mean, you know, it's, you know, they could, they could have just come in and just said it's a commercial type, you know, but.
The question was from the city. So when it comes down to permitting, we don't have zoning.
That's correct.
So then how, how is a seizure of extent from commercial and industrial plan that both on plans are commercial? Then we have a flat, I mean, based on the plan that's, was commercialized industrial. How do we extend it from commercial to industrial?
Uh, I would say generally, uh, that's a very general, I'm going to give you a general answer. Uh, when you start talking about commercial, you're talking about more, uh, retail shopping centers, uh, mom and pop stores, grocery stores, Walmart, uh, you know, those type of, uh, car, a, uh, car repair shop. Those things are considered more commercial. Industrial is going to be something more along the lines of a, uh, a refinery, uh, a manufacturing, uh, type facility, those type of things right there.
And surely that's how it's going into a residential area. And that's the question, I think.
So we have the applicant here. I want the applicant. I, you know, I don't have to take this.
Absolutely.
I don't have an answer, but what I would suggest. I can answer that question. I don't know what to, you know, do you want to tell them what's there? Uh, that's, that's on you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Uh, I just have two comments. Uh, first of all, uh, a comment was made earlier about changing the characterization, uh, it being industrial versus commercial. Uh, as the owner of the property, I consider everything that was originally designed to be designated as commercial to be commercial. So I think that was mischaracterized. This will be commercial. In terms of industrial, I think that's also being misconstrued. No, there will not be a refinery. And per the city of Arcola's recent changes, a pre-development agreement is requested. And, uh, that form was submitted today pursuant to the comments that Lawrence provided to us, uh, late, or we got our comments late yesterday afternoon. So my presumption would be that, uh, the discussion about uses and exactly what this layout would be would occur during that development meeting. If the development meeting obviously hasn't occurred, I don't know if there's a course of action to defer. I know that if it's a, uh, I, I, if we need to defer it without it being approved, I have no issues with that. Because it appears as if there's a lot of unknowns. Uh, I'm very happy to get the comments because that was very beneficial. And we do have a, uh, a plan and there's nothing having to do with a refinery or manufacturing or anything characterized as that. I would think it would be more of a, uh, a retail, uh, office manufacturing possible. But again, I think it's, uh, more appropriate to discuss this in a pre-development meeting because, uh, nobody has anything to look at. But I do have the benefit of, uh, the engineer's comments. But again, I would consider this commercial if we need to change the characterization. Uh, as, uh, council alluded to, uh, happy to do that. And, uh, if there's some definition of what commercial needs to be, that probably ought to be shared with, uh, with us now so that everybody knows exactly what their expectations are.
I think there were just some questions because we had some that were, it was clearly labeled commercial, 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 and then it said industrial site.
Uh, I think that that's probably mischaracterized. Those are my comments.
So what we can do, so Lawrence mentioned, this is correct, this is only preliminary plaque. So if, if, uh, your comments talk about the commercial industrial difference.
No, uh, no. So and, and, and the other comment, again, like I said, it's semantics. They could have called it, you know, reserve A flower garden. You know, they, they, and what we've asked, and we did ask this early on, is we always like to take now a pre-development meeting before we take any plaque. So that way, number one, we can make sure the applicant knows what the level of expectation is. And then staff, city of Arcola, know what's coming before them. So we can answer any questions intelligently, uh, before this, this body right here. And so, but again, I go back to, um, it is a preliminary plaque. It comes back to you. It's aimed for anyone that I could tell you that, uh, is going to come back to you again. And at that time, before he comes back, we're going to make sure we understand. So when you ask me, I can tell you, here's what has been conveyed to me.
I think what you can do is we can spend more with it, accept some of its conditions. Add one of the conditions both talked about, we have, we're going to have a development agreement, this is new subject for development agreement. So I think it's kind of preemptive, but we could just say that we, we're looking, like, one of the comments would be that, that, that the final plaque subject all terms agreed to in the development agreement. And that way, and that developing agreement definitely flush out all this stuff for this whole development. And so that will define what commercial versus industrial means and all that. And so as long as final plaque is in line with that development agreement, we should do it.
That would happen. It's just putting, putting you on notice that, hey, look, I'm subdivision, here's my building lines, here's my, you know.
We can add to the comments. So the list would be, the final plaque would be subject to all terms of development. Do that, then all those issues.
Any questions for me from anyone in the audience?
On the diet. Oh, oh, okay.
The difference between the process, moving about the processes, the local commercial to industrial, it all appears well and you doing with the business itself. So we kind of, I wouldn't say standing out, standing out by ourselves, but without zoning, you got to have people watch your eye. Everything becomes clear and I can't agree with you on that. Because without zoning, you can't differentiate what goes here, what goes there. So it's not like you're just saying, the fans from you gotta look at them very closely and see what question is, what are you planning on doing? What process are you planning on doing? Because it doesn't be refinery, it could be have materials warehouse for a store. You don't want to do that. So just, that's to watch your eye.
Motion already approved the industrial site class. With the recommendation that the final class is subject to all of the government's development.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor, all opposed.
They are supposed to be putting in a, a concrete, uh, in tiny points. Will that affect, no, tiny point. It's supposed to, I guess that's gonna, they're gonna open up that to have materials for the railroad or whatever. They had a meeting the other day, uh, at my church. Yeah, tiny point, Sandy point, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
I'm sorry, but, uh, will it affect Arcola at, at all with them putting in that concrete?
So.
I know they don't want it.
Is that, is that related to this?
You know, it's, um, I'm here for it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'd be all in favor of that motion. All opposed. Uh, motion is passed.
Counsel of the city of Arcola, General Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Nope, I would just say these, these pictures that y'all have for Howell Street and the roads and potholes on Howell Street, those are similar to what's on Sears Street as well and another one similar to, um, Post Road. So just wanted to let you know what we're dealing with. So can I entertain a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve a contract to. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Enterprise Water Pavilion Pavement for free repair on Howell Street and Post Road, not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Motion has been made by Mayor Prochem Sancho and seconded by Councilmember Jones, all in favor, all opposed.
Ten B, discussion consideration of impossible action to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcola, Texas, authorizing a contract with Valu Construction LLC for the buildout of Rice Avenue not to exceed the amount of fifty thousand dollars general fund. Lawrence Turner, Kaluza East.
So this is a project that was, uh, given to us. Blue contractor, uh, would be looking at doing some paving improvements. You all should have a map in front of you. No? Oh, okay. So what it is at the intersection of, uh, Dallas and Rice, if you're going south, you'd make a left. And you can see it on the sheet. And so, uh, what this is right here is the contractor would come in, uh, and, or let me back up. The reason this is happening is someone is trying to build a home over in that area and they don't have direct access to it. And so, uh, we've had conversations with Blue, uh, to make those road improvements same way, but extend the pavement, it's possibly two hundred feet. So that way, uh, they'll have access over to the lot that's going to be developed right there. Uh, you know, it's under fifty thousand dollars. You know, we've worked with this contractor before, with Fort Ben County and other areas. Uh, our recommendation would be to move forward with that project. Stabilizing the upgrade. No, no, it's just pavement on.
So what's going to happen with the water?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a crown on the road right now. And so drainage is not going to change any at all right there in that area.
Oh, it's flooding.
It, it, this is not drainage work. It, it is, it is the same as what it was before. Based on the amount of money that had to be spent for none of the road that you know, so this is strictly pavement on, driving surface only.
Drainage is another issue. In that area right there, you, you're not going to be able to tell the difference. It looks really bad right there in there. Yeah. And so that's why we're going to address.
And one of the comments that you have to say is passionate, I always like to look at him and quiet. Sound like I'm going off page. So we've been talking to the county as it relates to drainage through basically the Pine Dell area as a whole. Uh, during the flood, you know, it was, uh, big issues with drainage over there. Uh, what I think everyone needs to understand, and again, it's related to Rice, this right here, is that all of the water that drained down to Pine Dell is on the north side of railroad track. And it goes from Pine Dell southeast out of Fort Ben County into Bexoria County. And there's a bridge, and I remember the street we even drive by, but there's a bridge that takes it on the south side. That's about, hmm, mile and a half, almost two miles downstream from us. Uh, we had a meeting with, uh, Mark Bogler with the Fort Ben County Drainage District. Uh, they have gone out during the storm, there was some debris and things within the road ditch, or within the drainage ditch, uh, that they did remove, but they're also going to come in and do some work on that asphalt ditch. Because when you want to address drainage, you don't start at the top, you start at the very bottom and work your way back upstream. And so, uh, I want to say probably within the next, I'm going to say forty five to ninety days because they got more than just one area. Uh, he said, he being Mark Bogler, who is the director of the drainage district, said they would start trying to make improvements along that area as far as they can within their district. They can't just go into Missouri County and, and just start digging up their ditches as well. That is correct.
And I've, I've spoken with someone, um, I've talked, spoken with the mayor of, uh, of, uh, Iowa Colony. So, and I got to make some contacts with the drainage district over there. And so they're, they're, they're understanding that we're willing to make some issues, address some of these issues. So you don't want, you know, we're not going to be pushing any more waters down on them. And now keep in mind that this drainage problem didn't start in the last three months. I know the last six years it had to be working, but it's been going, so this is a problem that's been a problem. We are going to address the problem and just in real good weeks to.
Any other questions for me as it relates to that item?
So, all right, what did they say? Can I, can you entertain a motion on that item?
Blue.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Prochem Sancho, all in favor, all opposed. Motion is passed.
Agenda item ten C, discussion consideration of impossible action to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcola, Texas, authorizing a contract with A D C Army Company for the city of Arcola City Hall Court not to exceed the amount of forty seven thousand general fund. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
I make a motion to, um, approve the contract with A D C Army Company for the city of Arcola, um, carport not to exceed an amount of forty seven thousand dollars from general fund.
Motion has been made, uh, Mayor Prochem Sancho, seconded by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor, all opposed.
Agenda item ten D, discussion consideration of impossible action for the city of Arcola to enter into a contract with Kaluza East for professional engineering and surveying services not to exceed the amount of twenty thou, twenty one thousand dollars, twenty one thousand two hundred dollars for lift station number two at the street intersection of Dallas and Madison, general fund. But there will be a correction to that. That would be in surprise fund. Mr. Lawrence Turner, Kaluza East.
Just, this council, I think, in fact, it's a general fund, and it should, to validate this, and I think so, that's just a complaint, I would say, that you feel you should, um, extend it. Anything, what are your thoughts on that?
And really, item D and E really should just be one item to kind of go together. So we often decide I'm going to deal with that one, but basically, this is, this is what I was talking about earlier. Uh, we're looking at, uh, doing a rehabilitation on that, let's say, at the intersection of Dallas and Masterson. Uh, and if you've ever driven by there, you can see where the undermining is happening. Uh, and actually, after further investigation, portions of the fence are going to need to be replaced, some site grading is going to have to be done. So, uh, we'll be preparing plans, uh, to go out for bids on this particular project because it's going to be over $50,000. And, uh, I'll entertain any questions to you. This will be, this is one of the areas that you really have a, an issue with as it relates to I and I. Any questions for me as it relates to this particular project? And part of our fee also includes preparing the bid package, uh, having a pre-construction meeting. Uh, once the pre-construction meeting's here, uh, we do the bid opening, we'll come back before you so you can award that contract to whomever the low bidder is, uh, based on, on our recommendation. Then we'll move forward with construction, uh, and during construction, uh, between Roland and myself, we'll be doing the inspections on everything that needs to happen out there. They'll also have to do some bypass pumping, uh, to do this work because sewer still comes no matter what, you know, and so they got to pick a good segment of days where we don't want to have some dry flows, uh, to bypass pump. They obviously wouldn't be doing it by a week like this week when we got a hurricane in the zone. Other than that, I'll, any other questions that you have of me as it relates to this?
Can you tell me how long the bid process will be?
Uh, generally, it's about 30 to 45 days because you got to advertise, and that's where any of your work, anything that you do, you got to advertise twice in the newspaper, uh, and then you have a pre-construction, uh, I'm going to tell you, a pre-bid, then you open the bids, and then you got to come to council and go on the next council agenda. So this will probably get on the council agenda, not next month, but the month after.
So Mr. Lawrence, would you approve the contract with Blue, for professional engineering services, um, for lift station number two?
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Jones, all in favor, all opposed, motion passed. Now we're at agenda item 11, ordinances, 11A, discussion consideration of and possible action on amending ordinance number O dash 2024 dash 08 dash 005, 0005, in ordinance of the City of Arcola regulating the placement of manufactured homes on residential lots within the City of Arcola, Texas. Justin Pruitt, City Attorney.
Listen to the same, which we proved last time, we just felt the comments that were made during the, during the discussion, like we want to clarify this, we want to make sure, we're, so, we're not changing anything, it's still allowing manufacturing, you know, things that will, that will, but just to be very clear, but all, you know, all requirements of single payment, how many apply for the, for the manufacturing, um, that the property is properly planted, and that they got to spend a lot of time, and, of course, they have to, they have to, they have to skirt it, and, you know, the, the infrastructure and property, that's what we talked about last night, but it's, I think, it's going to stay with, really, in that regard.
So since we have pulled out the, you know, the.
You said, you said, motion, thank you.
Okay, okay, um, can I entertain a motion, please, before this?
No, the motion will continue. As members of the Argent County, we are in the, two, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, we are in the class, and can we, can we, can we, can we?
Motion has been made by Councilmember, um, seconded by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor, all opposed, motion passed. Now we're on, um, agenda item 11B, discussion consideration of and possible action or adopting ordinance number O dash 2024 dash 08 dash 0007, in ordinance of the City of Arcola, setting this term of appointment for fore and scope of work of the municipal judge and authorizes a mayor to enter into a contract with the municipal, um, judge regarding the duties and pay of the municipal judge, Justin Pruitt, City Attorney.
Again, it's the same, you proved last time, you put the contract, the contract is attached to it, unless we get attached to the term, but then next, it's just not the two of, we don't have a, we didn't, what's really going on is that we don't use, we don't take any kind of steps on it, the assumption will be the judge in two years' time, but it's going to depend on how you've been, you've got one, just makes it clear that, that the debt is two-year term runs currently, which is, which is, we're going to try to, maybe in the, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the.
I'm a motion of the two ordinance, number zero, that was two, zero, two, four, then zero, eight, then three, one, two, one, seven, and seven inches of the, of the, of the, 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 the.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim, Cinco, all in favor, all opposed, motion passed. At this time. I'll read the, 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 right here. At this time, City Council will now go into closed executive session as authorized under section 551.074 and 551.076 of the Texas Government Code for the Purpose of Consultation with Attorney. Please, may I just, oh, okay, it's not enough, can I just clear the chamber, please? We can clear the chamber.
Okay. You want to start stepping out, please?